Angel Code Enforcement meeting is called to order. You have to call our personnel, Patty.
Would you like me to call the roll?
Hmm?
Would you like me to call the roll?
Yes.
Okay. J.C. Info.
Present.
Rudy Davis.
Here.
Angela Berry.
Here.
Brenda Buenosera.
Here.
Wanda Schwer.
Here.
Laura Mataluny.
Here.
Lynn Reeves.
Here. We're having a message from the previous session, Patty, which you prepared to raise. Orland.
No. No, sir.
No?
No, sir.
Okay. Are we supposed to move a mic here and there for the people here and there? Are we supposed to move the mics around or not?
Um, the microphones down.
Can you hear all right? Everybody can hear all right. Through these masks, you don't know. Okay, I was approached by our city manager if our committee would be willing to look over the code situation for this ensuing year due to the law. And that's what we all consented to at the time so we can proceed with this. The item would be review the proposed charter of the city code. And this is kind of an overwhelming situation. I would like to call on our city manager to give us his perspective of what is required of us, seeing we consented to do this.
If you go down, the word says the scope of delivery clause. Actually, the word should be chapters, it's sections. It's section, chapters two, 10, 30, 54, 94 are in here, Bill. There are some existing codes that need to make some adjustments to 94, 209 to match with what it says in 62, 73. We need to delete some words, like Police Department in 94, 256. And 54, 35, we need to revise some things. So what I'm going to suggest is maybe the best thing to do is have you kind of review the codes and take a look at them and see if there's anything in there that you think needs to be changed in those five chapters. There is one area that we need to look at, and that is, we don't really have a code about docks and seawalls. And I'm going to pass this out to you. I've got an example of more detail from the Vera Beach, and we want to try to integrate the docks and seawalls into the update.
Thank you.
And what does chapter first say that covers seawalls and docks? It doesn't get into detail. We may only need to put a paragraph in it that says, as an example, in the Vera Beach, what the city council wanted to do with the docks and seawalls is to get a little more teeth in it because if we or someone in the city does an inspection on the seawall, typically we don't have that ability unless it's a house sale. Like, we had a seawall that fell in on Bayshore, and they were notified that they needed an engineer because we had a code, the house was going south. So before it closed, the seawall fell in. So they just want to get a little, somehow get a mechanism that's a little more stringent that we can say to people, hey, you need to have an engineer look at this, not just sit here and fall in the water. That one was faulty, you could see.
And we could say the same for boat docks. So over the last few years, we're out kind of cruising around the little coves, a lot of the seawalls were damaged from the waters that were, some of them actually starting to crumble. And two have been fixed the last time we went out. There's still some that are really, really damaged from there, and that needs to be covered.
Yeah, and that's really what, you know, we want to try to assemble something that's reasonable. You know, we aren't trying to be a tyrant. We're just trying to say, hey, you've got a seawall. We did do a survey of the city, and we had, with the 26th floor, 26 notices that we gave to people. It was a seawall or a dock that wasn't maintained. And we got, you know, some of them as an example, it might just be the cap is cracked or chipped off. The seawall itself was fine, it was the cap that was cracked. So we notified people and gave them courtesy notices. You know, they might want to check their seawall. So we're going to start doing that quarterly, going out and seeing if the seawalls have gotten worse, or we took pictures of all of it. And then after the storm, Laura went out, and we picked up some more docks that were damaged. So we gave those addresses notices also. So we're just trying to get a little more teeth in maintenance, I guess I would call it. And there is a section in here, this kind of talks about a lot of things, but there's some highlighted areas which I guess you could look at. But we weren't able to find anything, really anywhere, that talks about codes, about seawalls in most of the cities. It talks about the high criteria and stuff of that nature, but we don't have the ability right now to do anything but, you know, tell people, hey, your seawall looks bad, or it's got potential damage, so you need to take a look at it, you know. And I guess what we'd like to do is create something in the code that would allow us to maybe say, your seawall has a potential deterioration, we want you to get an engineer to look at it. Because we don't have engineer staff to look at that. Some way to do that with seawalls and docks in the city.
Don't you mind pulling down your mask and repeating that?
We, what we're trying to do is create something that says, gives us a mechanism to be able to tell someone, if we go out and do an inspection, that they would need to get an engineer, because we're not a seawall engineer, we're just looking at something that looks damaged, and certify that their seawall is okay. You know, it's...
We want to be looking at remedies and fines for noncompliance, like we do in some of the other code enforcement stuff?
Yeah.
You have X number of days to get this fixed?
Right.
And otherwise, here's the fine that would be levied?
Well, then we take them to the Code Magistrate. So that's really where it's at. It's just to try to get some compliance because, as an example, that seawall on Bayshore would not have, no one would have known about it unless you were right there and saw it. And unfortunately, it was me that saw it, and I told the homeowner that you need to get the seawall fixed because it was doing this. And there was a guy that was going to buy it, and he was going to repair it, but five days before the closing, it was on a Sunday, we had a lot of rain, and the rain got behind it and pushed it out. So, you know, there's got to be some timeframes that we enforce that they at least go get an engineer or prove to us that they've got an engineer to look at.
What prompts an inspection? I mean, is this just people, like your neighbors?
Well, that could be one. That could be one. A neighbor could call and say, hey, I want you to come and look at the seawall. Another issue, we're going to start doing, like I said, either through the sheriff or someone in the city will drive us, you know, for a morning, and we'll go around. And that's how we found all these issues with, you know, seawall caps that there's big chunks out of them. Well, you need to do some repair there. You know, we're, those things are easy to tell someone, hey, just repair your seawall so it doesn't look like you got bombed in Berlin in 1940s or something. So that's what we're trying to do.
So they contact you?
Well, they contact me or Code Enforcement, or just contact the city in general. And people can do that anonymously. I mean, we had some people after the storm that contacted us about, you know, a neighbor three doors away's dock is in front of his thing. You know, we don't have any way to pull that wood out of the water, we don't have the equipment for it. And I did talk to some other cities about that, and they don't pull it out either. You know, it's wherever it lands, you've got to pick it up. The county doesn't have a system to pick it up either. But our main concern is, you know, dereliction, like, you know, you can drive around the city, and there are some places that people just don't care about their dock, as an example. Maybe they don't use it, so if the boards pop up, I just leave them there and walk away. I mean, and we found properties like that too, before the storm. After the storm, we had several more. So...
Then the city's looking for a vehicle to go in and say, fix this or not fix this? Or how to report it?
Get it inspe, if somebody reports it or we find it and we deem that it needs an inspection, then we're going to, we want something to be able to tell them, hey, you've got to have a, you've got to get a certified engineer to inspect the seawall and say it's not damaged in any way, and it's not going to fall in and hurt your neighbor's seawall. Or, you know, fortunately, the one on Bayshore, both neighbors, it just done theirs brand new, so it didn't affect their seawalls. But if they had them, the one to the south, it could have, it could have taken his seawall down, but he had just replaced it.
So you're looking for one that somebody might spot that's dangerous?
Right.
Hanging out, not necessarily cracked or discolored or rusty or something like that?
No.
I don't want to be in a position to create a can of worms for, hey, you've got a crack in that, you better fix it or we'll shoot you.
No, no.
I don't want tech on the thing.
No, we're just wanting a mechanism so we have a way to say to Johnny, hey, you need to get an inspection on your seawall. Or your dock is another good example, it needs to be repaired in the next amount of days, and you've got to get a permit and do all this. Because I did check with the Water Navigation to kind of clarify what you need a permit for as far as a dock. If it's damaged and you're taking anything structural, which would mean the cross members of the strainers, which I hope all of you know what I'm talking about, but it's basically the floor of your house, then you have to get a permit, even though it's just a remodel. If you're just replacing a couple of boards on top, you don't need to get a permit. But, you know, things like that is another issue people aren't, you know, they tear their dock off and then they have some guy at midnight rebuild it for them. And we don't know if it's structurally sound or not. So that's really what the mechanism is for.
What other municipalities have you looked at inside of Medagora that we could maybe research?
Well, we looked down south in, you know, like, I think it was Corgables or Naples, and we found some stuff, but it really wasn't any dictation. There was a company that put out a report, you know, what to look for type thing. But other than that, we haven't...
About your town?
Yeah. Yeah. It's a report, and we have sent that to the guy that has done our seawall work, and he hasn't got back to us with a response on it. And thinks about that as a mechanism or a tool to be able to say, okay, if you do this, your seawall needs to be this, 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 this. So that's probably one of the biggest things that we need to tackle.
And we have nothing existing within this?
We have code about docks, but not really clarity that says, you know, we can ask the homeowner to get an engineer to do an inspection.
It basically says it must be in good repair, which is open for definition, and there's nothing that says what happens if it's not, so...
Right. So we're just trying to put some meat in that. And how we can do that, you know, that's probably one of the priorities. These two or three things that I got in the next little section, those were just doing some edits, basically.
Housekeeping.
Not...
Housekeeping.
Yeah, housekeeping edits. When we revised the rental registration fee, we overlooked this section 54, 35, and we should have revised upward those fees at the same time.
Does that give you a percentage of increase by looking forward?
Yeah, so we need to look at that. We raised the rental registration, or the city council did, from 100 to 300?
Yeah.
These are people like Nautical Lodge, the little motel, they pay a different fee, and that's in 54, 35. So what, you know, we'll have some more discussion on that, but what I'm looking at is maybe the base, it goes to the rental registration fee, and then we just raise the incremental for the rooms a little bit. So that's something to look at.
Then when we raised the fee, the rental fee to 300, did we have to back that back down because there were some legal challenges?
No. No, they, they didn't. There, I understand several years ago, there were some people that came in, you know, I was on console at time...
Yeah, I think we bumped it up and then we had to take it back down, right, Patty? Yeah.
Well, this console had the lawyer look at it. I mean, actually, at one time, they wanted to make a $5,000, and I was like, I think you're going too deep here. But that was their comments. So they raised it to 300. We've had a few people rumble about it, but for the most part, they paid it. And with that, we're going to start getting a little more investigative because we're finding that people, two months ago, come and got like a parking pass because they needed to park somewhere else, but now they say they don't rent. So we're going to have to, we're going to do some focus stuff on some of the condos because that's where the problem is. And a few homes where someone says, well, I'm not renting my home, but I'm house swapping. Well, that's technically the same for any, you know. You know, we've got people that'll tell you that too. So we're going to do some more, we looked into a software system that actually targets Airbnb rentals, but it was ridiculously high per quote. You know, they wanted like $18,000 a year to target. And then what they basically do is give you a list of, somehow they've got pictures of the insides and everything, I don't know how they do it, but it's kind of crazy. So that's that fee. The other couple of things are housekeeping. And realistically, the console was just asking you to go through the sections of the code and, you know, if you see anything in there that you think we ought to update or... So it's, I think this meeting is more a homework assignment to look at it, and then we'll have another meeting to kind of pick them apart. Wanda, you did this last time, so you kind of know what we did.
We had a process, yeah. We had a process.
Yeah. So we just take one and pick it apart and update it.
Is that right?
Yeah. Yeah, this is a seawall manual that we, we've asked an engineer to look at it, and it's been plagiarized.
Yes.
But it's got some good information in it, and it came from a city south of here. So, you know, we may adjust the code, and this is a document that we have available for someone that, you know, needs to work on their seawall or do something else to it, and we provide that, put it on the website, or if they want to pay for companies. So that's that concept. I've got all these lists of codes that people wanted to talk about. Question, one thing that came up was about the Porciutonian palms against people that planted them, and they're not allowed in the city. So that's something that came up. Tree height above roadways, that's another thing that came up. Recently, we went around, code enforcement did, because the FDOT standard is 13.5 feet, and there were, the fire department, why even, they do this, they're trucking out trees. So we had to go around and tell them to print the trees that were overhanging the street. And one of the console members has a comment about, and I don't know if we want to get that deep, but paint colors on the wall. So I don't know if we want to get that deep into that or not. Possibly one other thing that was brought up, and I'm just giving you the highlights. Rental property inspections, some cities do that, you know, if you have a rental property, then they do an inspection on it and just...
That starts messing around with the rental agreements that the resident...
Well, I will tell you that Reddington, was it Reddington George, Patty, that did all that stuff with theirs? They didn't touch that section, but what they did was they created some additional things that allowed you to do inspections like every other year or something. And we can get that and provide it to you, but...
I sat through a whole thing in legal cities a couple of years ago, where they had three different lawyers talking about what you can do that doesn't negate your grandfather under short-term rentals in the legislature?
Right.
And there was more you can't do than can.
Yeah.
And people were starting to do like what you have to have, you know, fire inspections and this and this, and have this whole list of stuff, and they go, no, you can't do that.
Well, and I've told the city council many times, and I know some of you have heard me tell them, don't mess with the rental, short-term rental.
You touch it, you lose your grandfather.
Right. So I will tell you that the sign ordinance is being rewritten, but that's, the city attorney's doing that.
Well, from this, so it's the main situation is for us two as a group to read through this situation and see that anything stands out, and to keep in mind some of his suggestions. I would like you to kind of spearhead it for our committee, if you would. And then, this is something that we're not going to be able to decide today, but I don't want, this is a personal situation, I don't want this committee to turn into some kind of a, let's put a fee on this, and let's put a fee on that, and then et cetera, et cetera. I think what Lynn is talking about is there's nothing there to say that the city's got any right to do anything except unless it's, he needs a vehicle if it's reported to the city, can they go look at it, et cetera. So let's keep it kind of casual rather than demanding to start off with.
That doesn't work.
They're what?
Well, some, you know, when it comes to a seawall, if we see a situation, and I'm going to use, let me tell you, if we see a situation like that, you know, we've got to tell them to repair it.
Sure.
Or they need to go get an engineer that tells us everything's okay. So that isn't, to me, being strong arm, that's just being safe.
And protective of the city.
And protective of the city and protective of the residents, because where's the guy next door to you? And you don't care about a seawall, and it falls in. And we didn't, you know, we didn't, we were proactive, I guess. So it's not a matter of, we're going to put a hammer on somebody, it's a matter of education and if there is a problem, then they need, the residents need to understand, all we're doing is asking you to get some firm engineer that says your seawall's okay, because it may not be okay.
As far as docks are concerned, the docks that are in misrepair can totally deteriorate and crumble, and they can cause serious damage to other people's boats and properties.
Right.
And that's the thing, and anything that's, that has a risk of causing damage to somebody else, I think that has to have some very strong language around that.
Yeah. Remember that?
Yeah. And, you know, people, we've got one right now, that they stripped the whole dock, and they rebuilt it, but they didn't get a permit. So now they've got a problem because they took the strainers and everything off, and but they didn't get a permit. It's like it's here today and not there tomorrow.
A floating by my dock on the outgoing tide.
Huh?
Or I see a floating by my dock on the outgoing tide.
Yeah.
This looks fine.
Well, that's a lot, and that's a lot of the problem, you know, mainly because we don't have the mechanism. So that's why we're going to try to start this quarterly thing, either using the sheriff or a resident that will take us. And that gives us a little more documentation to be able to say, hey, your docks need repair, or your seawall needs to be looked at. And who knows? Some people that I've talked to act like, or they didn't even realize it was under their cap, it was falling off, because they probably don't go out there, they just sit at their pool or something, watch the water.
Storm will do that and I'll tell you about it.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's kind of where we're at and what we would hope to accomplish.
Okay, let's go around the board here. Rudy, do you have any comments or observations?
Yeah, again, I'd like to hear Wanda with a brief description of how they actually tackled each section, what process did you use?
Well, we had, we had the full 90 days. So we decided we were going to meet every other week for no more than two hours every other week. And we split up the sections that had to be reviewed so that each, each meeting, there were certain, certain number of sections that everybody was expected to have reviewed and be ready to comment on. Not trying to do everything at once, just, like I say, the very next, whenever we decided to meet again, the next meeting, we would look at maybe section two and section 10 because they're kind of small.
Right.
I think section 54 has to have its own meeting, it's going to be fairly large.
And 94, probably.
Probably, yeah. I haven't been through that in total yet, but, you know. So, and if we're going to have this done by the meeting in March, that's probably going to be meeting at least every other week.
And if it extends beyond that, you know, we're just, state of the console, maybe. Because these aren't things that, I guess, how I look at it, they are peculiar to the existing city council. They're peculiar to the whole city, and, you know, if we need to make adjustments, we need to do that. Every so often, you do need to look at things and kind of say, well, maybe I, that word doesn't really fit what... doesn't really fit what it should fit, you know, or that section. So that, it's just for clarification. Now, I'm, I'm not gonna tell you that they wouldn't like it done by March, but, you know, things have happened, and we're in a different world right now.
Yeah, maybe make sure that we have done at least a first pass by March, and the March report will be, we've done this, we've completed this much, and here's what we would like an extension-
Right.
-to work on because we were unable to give it the, the depth of study that it needed.
Right. Yeah, because you guys are, your board isn't an occupiers, you're, you're the board, so there is no hundred twenty day, uh, due night, I can remember this.
So Wanda, you want to create a subcommittee?
No. No, we don't need a subcommittee.
Hmm?
We don't need a subcommittee.
All right.
I mean, we, I think we should, every one of us, uh, review what the sections that need to be reviewed by each meeting, and be prepared to make suggestions or recommendations or-
Feed them.
Yeah, if you go through them and you say, we don't need to change anything in that section, that's fine, that's, you know.
I found a couple of typos so far, but that's-
Well, Laura and I will probably, couple of things to, to look at, you know, other than this view we threw up, because those are the things we highlighted, but, yeah, it's a section, and Laura and I will probably give you some feedback if there's any.
Well, we're gonna have this handed in by the, the board by March, that's only six weeks from now. So what's that, three meetings?
That would be three meetings.
You've got five sections.
We have five sections.
Speed up a little bit.
Yeah, you know, if, if you really need an extension, I'll just ask that at the council.
Or do you want to do one a week?
Huh?
Or do you want to do one a week?
One a week's good for me.
Hmm?
One a week is good for me. I don't think that's very taxing, and-
Wednesdays are good for me.
When we get into fifty-four and ninety-four, like Lynn said, those are pretty large, we may want to save some ti, extra time.
More time at that point.
Yeah, I think fifty-four, we close up the, um, the review of-
Right.
-these other documents, I, I think that's gonna, I think that deserves a meeting all by itself, that's gonna be a long one.
I agree.
Okay, then, we should take it, read it, and meet in a week-
Mm-hmm.
And refer to section two, first one.
Part with two.
How about two and ten, they're, they're not very large, and I think we could probably do those two.
Which one?
Two and ten is like this.
To begin with.
We can do two and ten in one meeting, is what Wanda's saying.
Two and ten gets reviewed by the days thirteen to twentieth. Find our next, what's next?
That is the twentieth, and we have a work session, but that one, if you were that one-
No. If the time's good, would everyone have, or, since it's-
We can make it on a Thursday instead of a Wednesday.
I'll take it Thursday.
I can't do Thursday.
And then Wednesday, February tenth, is the part we're at after meeting.
Well-
What are we looking at, the twentieth?
Wednesdays are actually best for me, Wednesdays are best for me. That would be the twentieth, yes.
Twenty?
Yeah.
Same time, same place?
Can we do earlier, or?
What, what do you like?
Earlier?
I don't know.
One o'clock, or ten o'clock, or?
I mean, I like mornings, so-
You talking about morning on a Wednesday?
Mm-hmm.
No, I'm not on, I gotta, not on a Wednesday.
Okay.
Afternoon is-
How early on a Wednesday for you, J.C.?
The afternoon.
One o'clock?
Okay.
One o'clock?
That sounds good.
They'll solve that.
Pardon?
They'll solve that.
Yes.
I don't want to, yeah.
Okay, so Wednesday, the twentieth?
Two and ten by Wednesday, the twentieth at one P.M.
One P.M., yeah.
It's thirty need a week?
Actually, thirty is the marine. That's why you start getting into the docks and seawalls.
Need one by itself?
I think, I think so.
By Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, at one P.M.
Can't quite understand that, Rudy.
He said Wednesday, the twenty-seventh.
Oh, I know the twenty-seventh.
At one P.M.
I'm, I'm just adding seven days to the twentieth. So that forty-seventh is the Wednesday.
Oh, you're, you're not talking about sections, all right.
Yeah, there was, that was, that one would be section thirty for the twenty-seventh. I got it written down.
You got that, Patty?
Yeah.
You sure there's an email on that, too?
Sure.
Okay. She'll, she'll put that on the agenda.
It'll be on an email from Patty, also. Covering what sections, et cetera.
If, on another subject, just so the planning board knows this, uh, the comp plan review will start sometime in the next couple of months. And, uh, so, but that's a long-term process, and we're gonna hire a consultant to help with that. So, uh, how involved were you with that last time? Rudy, J.C., and you probably know.
Yep, what was it?
The comprehensive plan, it's up for review, it's a cycle every five or six years, March has been six this time. So we'll hire a consultant, and that's basically going through the comp plan, but I'm just kind of giving you some future issue of, yes.
Okay.
Becoming the board. And I know J.C. and, you probably went, were you on at sixteen?
No, I'm new, Tom, my husband maybe was there.
Okay, you went through it, Rudy, right. But you were on at sixteen?
I wasn't on board at sixteen.
Okay. Well, maybe it's only J.C.
Okay, task ahead.
But that, that's done by a consultant, and they'll come in and do the presentation and discuss it. And if there's any changes.
I was just looking on at this, there's fifty-four and ninety-four with the big ones, if you want to put two weeks, we just set thirty on the twenties, Wednesday to twenty-seven. We could go two weeks, set fifty-four as meeting on Wednesday, February tenth, and then go two more weeks and set ninety-four as Wednesday, February twenty-four. And then that would still get us under the March one line. Then we give us two weeks on those two big categories.
You know, actually, fifty-four is not that large, it's, that's the, that's the one about the fees. That was only one section that we're-
Yeah, that, that should be-
What day's more, thirty?
Yeah, thirty, thirty's the big one.
Thirty and ninety-four.
Well, switch thirty and fifty-four, make fifty-four available, doable by the twentieth, and then put thirty down next, as Wednesday, February tenth.
That works.
And ninety-four is due February twenty-four. Then we go back over that page? All right, the next meeting will be Wednesday, January the twentieth at one P.M., and we will discuss our findings on section two and ten. Then the next meeting will be Wednesday, January twenty-seventh at one P.M., and will be section fifty-four. And then the next meeting is two weeks later, February the tenth, where we will discuss section thirty. And then the next meeting, and last meeting, where we're discussing sections, will be Wednesday, February twenty-four, and it'll be section ninety-four.
Thank you, Lynn.
Yeah, there's point four on page two, like the last point, recommend improvements to enhance code enforcement protocol. Do I read that, as how we actually have code enforcement officer, be it the sheriff or whoever, with the city, their process, fines, penalties, and responsibilities?
Right.
That's, that's another section to discuss, then, isn't it?
Well, it's more about-
Is that within one of these?
Yeah, I think-
That's actually section two.
Section two.
That's a section two.
Good.
Anything else? Wow, Angela, Wanda, are new to our committee, by, well, from last year, to one member we could never find, and the other member had to resign because the council said they couldn't be in the same household. So I'd like to welcome the addition to the zoning committee of the two ladies.
Thank you.
And is there any comments from any of the other members at large?
No.
Rudy?
I'm good.
Okay, class, we have our assignments. We can consider this meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Till next time.